For an increase in accordance to the solidary contract with their within their rights to do so to adjust the rates and you can see that their rates on the second page have been adjusted.
Ms. Turner, is it fifty-five cents? That's going to be fifty-five cents more?
Yes, it is an increase.
And as for residential and commercial, it would be seventy-eight cents a month?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? And I know that the cities-
So staff, yeah, so staff is recommending that we pass this increase, not anything additional, but we pass the increase from Republic that we pass it on to the consumer and it will be effective as of October 1st.
We really don't have a choice, Ms. Turner?
We have discussed this, you're right, Councilwoman Kenton, we discussed this and historically we happen to pass added an additional administrative cost on top, but we're not trying to do that at this point. What we're just trying to do is if it's an increase from Republic, we need to just directly pass it on to the consumer and not necessarily add the addition for administration. And so that's what we're recommending, that we have a clear pass through to the consumer.
Any other comments by the council? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve or whatever the council so chooses.
I didn't hear what she said.
She was like, "I'm not sure if I can hear the words."
Yeah, I'm sorry, I lost you, I didn't hear that. Is there a motion on the floor?
I just need some clarification. All right, so Ms. Turner, so your, the recommendation would be to approve the change of fifty-five cents for residential, seventy-eight cents for commercial, the increase?
Yes, ma'am, that's the recommendation, the recommendation. So you see that they've given us the price sheet here, okay, so previously we had frozen, right, increases, so this time we're just asking that you pass the increase on, so we can just use example, a residential would be probably is eighteen dollars and thirty-nine cents, and then it'll be eighteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
Okay. And then I have a question for our financial director. With that, with that increase, if we were to make that increase, what would we be anticipating our refuse budget, you know, would we, at the end of the year, the next fiscal year, would we still be in the red or would we be closer to be in the black with this increase?
We would be in the black, because we are addressing our transfer and it's just a pass through, so we're not looking to make money, right, just passing on what the cities may charge.
Any comments or questions? If not, do I have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve the rate change effective October 1st, 2020.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
One more question, I'm sorry. I think we had talked about for our elderly residents, sixty-five and over?
They have their discount here.
Mm-hmm.
It's here.
What is the discount?
Sorry, just made my mistake.
Is it three dollars, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Three dollars?
That's still remains. So that's like a bulk pickup, then we don't charge them for their bulk pickup, that's still remains.
So that's still going to remain, the three dollar discount?
Yes.
Sounds good. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? If not, do I have a motion on the floor to accept the rate changes for Republic?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the Republic rate changes effective October 1st, 2020.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
I'm sorry, the audio was cutting in and out, so do I have a second on there?
I second, I, Councilwoman Martinez.
Okay, any citizens' comments?
There are no, mayor.
If, since there are none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, item does pass. I believe it's four to zero, correct, Ma'am?
That is correct.
Moving on to item F, consideration and action to approve Resolution 2020-023 National Night Out 2020. I have it listed as being ready to see attendance for Mr. Martin.
Mayor, his assistant, Charlotte, will be subbing for him this evening, Mr. Reed cannot come.
Okay, that's fine. Charlotte, when she's up, go ahead. Might you tell us about National Night Out? I appreciate it.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I want to visit with you briefly about National Night Out this year. This is a nationwide event and we participated last year, if you recall, first annual community live. And this year, it being pandemic-stricken, we didn't want to pass the event like a lot of communities around this are doing, they canceled. And I was notified by the coordinator of Texas, and she's sitting there very nicely and just explaining that the state of Texas was the first, we ranked first in the nation twenty-three out of the past twenty-four years. So knowing that and seeing all the communities that have withdrawn, I didn't want Florisville to withdraw. So knowing that information, I started to brainstorm and because we cannot get together as a community, this year's idea was to have our peace officers, the first responders, be lined up downtown around the courthouse square and have the community come give them a parade, honor them, salute them for what they've done for our community. They've been with us through the pandemic and it's our turn to honor them with a parade. And if you may have noticed, Google's kind of used, thank you, Greg Rips, an article he put in the paper, kind of talks about what our idea is. And we also have an ad in the newspaper that will run this week and next week as well. So we want the community to come out and participate in their own personal vehicles and parade through town and salute their first responders and officers. And it's our way of showing gratitude and thanks for what they do daily for us, putting their lives on the line, and we want them to know that we do appreciate it, City of Florisville. We will also be going to county, county commissioner's court on Monday, and I've been sponsored by Commissioner Regamos. And city mayor and my, city manager, excuse me, and myself will be going to Commissioner's court on Monday morning. We want to have our judges, which will be the chief police, the sheriff, chief of fire, and also the commissioners to judge. So the top three personal vehicles that are creatively decorated will have an opportunity to win a Ring Doorbell. Ring is the sponsor this year, so we thought that would be best, which is a safety item for any household member. So we wanted to give a prize this year. We will be giving grab bags with stickers of yard signs for the first hundred participants. So I hope the community does come out and flags as well. Ring, I'm lining flags and I handed them out this evening and, Madam Mayor, you'll have your sheriff waiting for you. But I'm very excited about the event. I think the community will come out and support their PD and first responders and, thank you, Greg, for the wonderful article. And that is going to occur on October 6th, which is a Tuesday, and it is nationally. Texas would hold their event on the first Tuesday of October, but because of pandemic, all the other states postponed to October 6th. So not only Texas, but all the other states will be celebrating at the same time. They will be hosting their own events, and we want to host ours as well and count toward those, those communities in the state of Texas and hopefully continue to rank first like we have in the past.
At what time will be?
The parade, the community parade will begin at 7:00 P.M.
And where would they line up?
They will be, they will be lining up, once they contact me, and my information is in the newspaper, my phone number, my email, where I can reach, I will assign them a number so they can be judged if they want to be judged. And I will then explain which streets we want them to come into, depending on what number they are, I'll see right of sure. I will explain to the individual where they will come in and park and wait for the parade to begin.
Yes, and Charlotte, can we explore about the online, which you can do with the hashtag?
Yes, so a lot of individuals may not be able to come out and participate with us in the community, but they might be at home hosting a barbecue and getting to know their neighbors and maybe they want to do their own celebration at home. You're welcome to celebrate at home and, in support of National Association Town Watch. And you're watching, you're just promoting the preventing violence and crime. And by doing so, if you want to take pictures of your celebration, hashtag Florisville Texas and hashtag National Night Out or NNO, which is the acronym for National Night Out 2020. And we will accumulate those photos and post them on our websites.
Ms. Charlotte, you said that they're going to be standing, they're going to be standing along where?
The officers?
Uh-huh.
We will have them lined up on Fourth Street, to a port and seat, and then around to Third and over down D Street. So they'll surround the courthouse.
But, oh, they're still?
Yes. So that's why we want the community to be in the personal vehicles, they don't have, they don't want them to come out, get off, stop, we want them to just salute their officers and first responders and move the parade community along.
So nobody, you're people that just want to fight you?
We'll have the officers move in group because they'll be in the street to move along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, it sounds like a lot of work that you've been doing. Any other comments by the council?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Last year's event was great, you know, we had it at the event center, there was a great turnout, you know, our officers, our local PD, DPS-
Yes.
-county officers, our first responders were there. Did we have, did we have a helicopter?
We did have a helicopter.
I mean, it was a great event and it's unfortunate that we're unable to host another event like that, but this event is, I think, the next best option that we have and I want to thank you for all of the hard work and the thought that you put into putting this on so we can celebrate our officers and our first responders and, you know, and actually still thinking about, you know, contributing to the state being the first in the nation for this celebration, I think it's, I think it's fabulous. Those are the kinds of things I put Florida on the map, so thank you so much.
I think people will be ready to come out and just thrive and show their support.
Absolutely.
Especially after being socially distant for many months as we have been, but trying to keep it safe and trying to go about it the right way, so we just didn't want to cancel like, right, most of the surrounding communities have.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other comments by the council?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Last year's event was great, you know, we had it at the event center, there was a great turnout, you know, our officers, our local PD, DPS-
Yes.
-county officers, our first responders were there. Did we have, did we have a helicopter?
We did have a helicopter.
I mean, it was a great event and it's unfortunate that we're unable to host another event like that, but this event is, I think, the next best option that we have and I want to thank you for all of the hard work and the thought that you put into putting this on so we can celebrate our officers and our first responders and, you know, and actually still thinking about, you know, contributing to the state being the first in the nation for this celebration, I think it's, I think it's fabulous. Those are the kinds of things I put Florida on the map, so thank you so much.
I think people will be ready to come out and just thrive and show their support.
Absolutely.
Especially after being socially distant for many months as we have been, but trying to keep it safe and trying to go about it the right way, so we just didn't want to cancel like, right, most of the surrounding communities have.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other comments by the council?
I have a comment. Charlotte, thank you so much for doing all this.
You're welcome.
I know it's a lot of work, but we appreciate what you're doing.
You're welcome, I enjoy it.
Any other comments before I open the floor for a motion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-003 National Night Out, 2020.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second, any citizens' comments?
There are no, mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item passes, thank you, council, thank you, Eddy, Charlotte, and Ben Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council.
Moving on to item G, consideration and action to approve Proclamation 2020-007 Hispanic Heritage Month, Councilmember Jimenez.
Before we begin, did you, Mayor, did you want to read the resolution for National Night Out?
Yes. Okay, National Night Out, before we move on to the next item, whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 6th, 2020 entitled National Night Out, and whereas the 37th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Florisville to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country and promoting, in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Florisville plays a vital role in assisting the Florisville Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Florisville and is supporting National Night Out 2020 locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of Florisville be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Florisville. And whereas police community partnership, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out. Now therefore, we, the city council, the Florisville City Council, do hereby call on all citizens of Florisville to join the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 37th Annual National Night Out on October 6th, 2020. Furthermore, that it be resolved that we, the Florisville City Council, do hereby proclaim on October 6th, 2020 as National Night Out in the City of Florisville, passed and approved this 24th day of September, 2020. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item G, consideration and action to approve Proclamation 2020-007 Hispanic Heritage Month, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes, thank you. I added this proclamation to this agenda, we didn't get a chance to address this at our last meeting. And being that I am also the president of the Association of Hispanic Municipal Officials, I felt it was fitting to add the proclamation to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. As you may know, the month starts on September 15th and it goes into October 15th. And just to reiterate that this celebration, this year's theme is Hispanics, be proud of your past, embrace your future. And so I wanted to add this proclamation to the agenda so the city can recognize it and invite all of the Hispanics in our community to embrace their backgrounds, to be proud of who they are and where they came from. So Mayor, would you like for me to read the proclamation?
Yes, if you would, please.
Okay. So we have a proclamation on the celebration for National Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas each year the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas, what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on October 15th and ending on October, I mean, starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas, this year's theme, Hispanics, be proud of your past, embrace your future, invites Hispanics to embrace their backgrounds, to be proud of who they are and where they came from. And whereas, although two numbers numerous to recognize individually by name, Hispanics serve as civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, soldiers, educators, journalists, first responders, pioneers of art and science, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and so much more. And whereas, the Hispanic community's contributions, hard work, love of country, and deep commitment to faith and family help shape the character of Florisville. Our communities are made stronger because of so many people who have traced their roots to the earliest days of the continent. Hispanics have always been integral to our national story, and whereas Hispanics continue their rich history of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality, playing a vital role in the strong inclusive community of the City of Florisville. And whereas, the City of Florisville is fortunate to be an ethically diverse community with many of its residents having roots and cultural ties to Latin America. And whereas, the City Council for the City of Florisville recognizes that Hispanics have shaped and strengthened the fabric of our community, and the United States have enriched every facet of our national and local identity with traditions that reflect many diverse Hispanic ancestries. Now therefore, be it resolved that on the 24th day of September, 2020, the Florisville City Council does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2020 as Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon the residents of Florisville to honor the invaluable ways the Hispanic community has contributed to Florisville, a diverse town of neighbor and friends.
Thank you, Florisville, Charlotte. Any questions or comments? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Proclamation 2020-007 Hispanic Heritage Month.
I'll second it. Okay. I have a motion and a second, any citizens' comments?
There are no, mayor.
Thank you. While there's no comments, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item passes, thank you, councilmembers. Moving on to item H, consideration and action to approve Ordnance 2020-009, amend the ordinance 035 and ordinance number 149 on the lot sizes. I'll hand it over to Councilwoman Kenton, Mayor Ocho.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I was working on this ordinance because I did some research and here in Florisville, there are 792 properties in the City of Florisville, which includes residential and commercial that are less than 75 feet by 100, which was, that was what the ordinance was. And then we also had some properties that, at least 356, that's including residential and commercial, I'm talking about the front side of the property. And some of those properties are less than 50 feet. So that's why I decided that, you know, we need to change the ordinance and grandfather the people that already live in Florisville that have land or in the front that's not 75 feet, that if a disaster, anything would happen, that they would have the opportunity to rebuild in that property. So that's why I wanted this ordinance to, you know, amend the ordinance and grandfather those people that already live in the city and that have properties that are smaller than 75 feet in the front and that are smaller than 75 by 100.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kenton. Any questions or comments from either council or by legal, our legal representative?
I have a question.
Yes.
So if this, if we do not amend the ordinance, and maybe Ms. Turner, you can probably answer this question, you know, what, what would that mean for somebody that would come forward and let's say that something catastrophic does happen to their home and they would have to rebuild on their lot and they do not, the residential lot is in an area of at least 75,000, 7,400 feet and should be at least 100 feet deep and at least 75 feet wide, what if it, you know, it doesn't meet those-
Then they would have to have a variance and a public hearing and come before the planning and zoning, hopefully get recommendation from them, and then come to you and ask for your permission to be able to do that. So it would be a lot, a lot of quest. And so we've run across this several times and I have to commend Councilwoman Kenton, she was even up there measuring lots to make sure.
Yeah.
But it is something that we need to do. And so in the older section, I believe, definitely it was every councilman, in the older section, because the lots back then were a lot smaller, they don't need the lots, and I think we did this back in 1989. And so the idea of the attorney was rather than allowing the newer subdivisions to be, build the smaller lots, is to use the grandfathered lot. So if it's already established at that size, then you can be able to rebuild a lot at that size, allowing you to do the new apartment without a variance, which takes a public hearing, I have to notify everybody within 200 feet of the property, we have to put it in the newspaper, it's, it could-
A long process.
Uh, anywhere from 60 to 90 days to the process.
And that's why I'm concerned, because if something happens and then they're going to have to go through all this and it's not, I don't think that's right for our citizens to, I mean, there are many, if something happens, there are many cops in and then to have to do this, so.
What this will do, Councilwoman Jimenez and Council, it will give them an opportunity to make use of their property, to continue to make use of it, even if it does not fit into your regulations. If it did fit at one time, then it would allow them to rebuild and have that opportunity. If not, I think what Councilwoman Ocho discovered was that there was a lot of lots out there that were non-complimenting, and people were worried because they couldn't do anything right there. So this could give them an opportunity to go ahead and rebuild and grow your city.
Well, I just, I just have another comment, you know, Councilwoman Kenton, you know, I commend you for actually going out and doing the research and finding all this information out. You know, I mean, how many years ago was it that we had a tornado come before, so who would have thought that we had a tornado? And thank God, you know, there wasn't as much damage as, you know, other cities have, you know, had with tornadoes, but who knows, who knows what the future's going to hold? And if something does happen, you know, we want our families to be able to rebuild their homes and, and have a place to stay. We don't want people leaving our community because they're unable to utilize their property.
This would be a faster process, I think, than-
Yes, yes.
And thank you, Luis Rodriguez, for working all this with the-
Yes, thank you, ma'am. You did a lot of work on it.
Yes.
Thank you. And now, do we have any other comments or questions before I entertain a motion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance 2020-009, amend the ordinance number 0035 and the ordinance number 149 on lot sizes.
I have a vote, do I have a second?
Can I second it?
Yes.
I have a second, any citizens' comments?
There are no, mayor. No, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, motion passes. And Councilwoman, Mayor from San Antonio, if you'll go ahead and read the ordinance, since you were instrumental in it, I know it's a long, I think it's two, three pages long, but if you can read at least the first page for the community to know what we're talking about.
I'm thinking, Mayor, if it's okay, if she reads the heading and then she can read the grandfathered, right, coverage. An ordinance 20-009, amend the ordinance number 0035 and number 149. An ordinance, amend the ordinance 0035 and 149 of the City of Florisville, ordinances establishing standards and procedures for operations, establishments, determination of lots which are heretofore grandfathered pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 51.001 and providing for binding effect, enactment, repeater, certificities, qualifications, effective date, proper notice, and hearing. Grandfather number six- Grandfather number six, grandfather lots. Now we're standing the minimum requirements for lot size within the virus zoning district. Structures may be built, moved on to expanded, reconstructed, occupants are used on a non-conforming lot of report that exists prior to the enactment of this ordinance. Provided all such structures shall meet all other requirements of this charter.
I understand. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes. All right, moving on to item I, consideration action to approve the city council meeting dates for October, November, and December of 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, in your pocket, you have the information for the dates. And I do have to say that we have met a lot in 2020. Between the pandemic, all of our emergency meetings, and our budget workshop meetings, and special meetings that we have had to have, we have met a lot. But we have, historically, for the months of October, November, and December, were asked for one meeting officially per month. In the month of October, normally it is peanut festival that we're having the problem with. But this time is actually going to be election. So with this, we're going to be having election hosting here, starting October 13th. Is that the record date? So between October 13th and October 30th, we'll be hosting early voting here at City Hall, actually in the chambers and the executive conference room. So we will not be able to host any meetings here. We don't want to relocate to other locations. We are going to be asking that we do 100% Zoom on October 8th meeting, but not have the October 22nd meeting. In November, we're just asking to have the first meeting of November, November 12th, because it does conflict with Thanksgiving, which it historically does. It will be conflicting with Thanksgiving. And at that meeting in November, our lovely financial director will be back. She'll be able to tell you how we closed the year and how we opened and started our new year at your, on November meeting on November 12th. She normally attends our meetings because she likes to be here with us. So she'll be participating on Zoom October 8th, but I don't anticipate it this time for her to have anything on the agenda. The December meeting, or the scheduled meeting in December, we're asking for December 10th. It will be either Zoom and/or in person. I don't know if the rule will still apply in December. It depends upon the governor. But we're asking the council to cancel the meeting scheduled for the 24th due to the holiday.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by the council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve city council meeting dates for October and November December.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Please second.
I have a second. Any citizens' comments?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item passes. Thank you very much, council. Moving on to item J, consideration and action to approve the city of Florisville 2021 holidays. I'll hand that over to Mrs. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for that last look. So what we have before you now is we're looking at the year 2021. Just got used to seeing 2020 and now I have to get used to seeing 2021. We have our list of our historical same holidays that we have. It's just that, as you know, the calendar moves. We've highlighted the ones that are definitely not necessarily false on the holiday, but we're going to be observing, as you see, that we'll be observing 4th July on that Monday. We'll be observing Christmas on the 27th, meaning it falls on holidays. So we'll be, City Hall will be closed those days. And again, it'll happen for the new year. So these are the holidays we're recommending. It does have one Friday, October 8th for peanut festival, as we have done this year. We have the one day. And so these are the holidays we're asking for you all to approve at this time.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I do know, you know, we have that Friday for the peanut festival in October, but since the peanut festival had talked about rescheduling this year's until March, have we thought about that?
Yes, I didn't have any clarification as to if it was going to be. Historically, the reason why I believe they closed for that Thursday and Friday and now definitely this Friday is because they have to set up on the street. We close, it's hard to get in and out of City Hall. I didn't know if they were going to have a full-fledged with vendors or anything like that when they came to present. Or was it just going to be a parade? Or if it was going to happen on a Saturday? Because typically the parade happens on Saturday. But I would have to add this to your attorney. If you care, if you want to declare a holiday, you may declare a holiday, but you have to dissolve via vote. And then we'd have to make a budget amendment because that's going to adjust how many days we have to pay for holiday. Please remember that a holiday means that anybody in Public Works and/or Police Department is getting paid double time for that holiday.
Ms. Turner, and we couldn't switch from July the 5th and then save that date for the holiday for March?
I'm sorry. Okay, so you, 4th of July is a federal holiday. And if it falls on the weekend, you have to give staff to do the holiday. And so we could not do that for that time. But if you want to, but it sounded like to me, and I could be wrong. Ms. Castro, the president, did indicate that they will probably have the full-fledged peanut festival in October. And so with the carnival and the closing of the streets and all those kind of things. So we may have to just struggle through and unnecessarily give a holiday to all staff. We may have to be prepared to do some overtime for that March event. But I don't anticipate closing down City Hall and declaring it a holiday.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the council? If none, I will entertain a motion to accept, to approve the 2021 holidays.
I move to approve the 2021 holidays. 21, yes, holidays.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Please second.
I have a second. Any citizens' comments?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the, or approving the holidays for '21, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion is approved. Moving on to our executive session pursuant to section 51.1.74 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the appointment, appointment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or city manager's evaluation. And I know Mrs. Turner has handed out her documentation. So I'm going to hand this section over to our city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We are, I am requesting that we have this in open session.
That is correct, Mayor. And thank you, everyone, for turning in the evaluations. Of those who did turn it in. What I'm going to do, Mayor, is I'm going to go, I'm going to read every section. I'm going to tell you what is outstanding score. And then I will give you an average per section, and I will give you an average at the very end. Is that okay, Mayor? In terms of?
Yes, very much.
Any comments, I will read them as we go through this one. Okay. Number one is the management of the organization. And that basically indicates that Ms. Turner effectively runs the operation of the organization, creates a collaborative team-building environment for staff, recognizes the accomplishments of staff and other agencies working on behalf of the city, supports professional growth and opportunity within the organization, accepts full accountability for staff and the outcome of city projects or decisions, identifies organizational problems, and takes renewal action. The highest score that Ms. Turner could get on that is a six. And today, the average is a 3.5. Number two, execution of policy. Understands and complies with policies and procedures governing this city. Implement city policy fairly and consistently based upon council decisions, goals, and applicable laws and regulations. Works towards accomplishing identified council goals, departments, other organizations, and the community. Highest score is a six. Lowest, of course, would be a zero. And on that one, 4.33 is the average today. Number three, financial management. Indicates property prepares and manages the budget. Demonstrates ingenuity and creativity in approaching budgetary matters, including long-range revenues and expenditures for the organization. Again, highest score on that is a six, lowest is a zero. On that one, the average score is a 3.0. Comment. Understands she will be implementing changes as stated in the recommendation of the audit. And then I'll go back and I'll read some of the other comments. Moving on to number four, deals with relations with the council. Provides regular updates to the council, keeping them informed about current and critical issues. Makes an effort to be accessible to council members. Handles issues that are brought by the council in a consistent and timely manner. Maintains an honest, truthful, and professional relationship with each council member. Keeps a positive attitude and approach to new ideas, issues, and complaints raised by council members. That one, the highest is six, and today the average is a 3.0. Moving on to number five, community relations. Makes an effort to understand general community issues and concerns. Remains involved and active in the community. Represents the city well in a professional and positive manner. Works proactively with the media and the press. Works effectively with community organizations and other agencies. Educates the community on city goals and services. Highest score, six. Today, it's a 4.0. Moving on to section six, dealing with communications. Ensures that council members receive information in a timely and effective manner. Presents the council and community with clear, inaccurate written reports and correspondence. Responds to correspondence, requests, and complaints quickly and appropriately. Facilitates open two-way communication and encourages mutual honesty and respect with the community, council, and staff. Highest is a six, and on that one, it's a 3.75. Moving on to number six, leadership. Provides the council and the organization with growth solutions and creative alternatives to issues and problems. Anticipates in response to issues. Assures that council decisions are thought out. Objective, consistent with past practices and are legal and ethical. Makes use of sound administrative practices. Leads the organization through effective management of people and tax. And that is a 3.50. Okay, that's seven. And then eight, professionalism. Deals effectively and appropriately with the public and other organizations. Devotes time and energy to the job. Demonstrates high ethical standards in the organization. Works to keep politics and personal perspective out of the decision-making process. Stays active in professional organizations and regional issues. Highest score, six, and today's a 3.75. Adding everything up, it came up to 4.805. And I'm going to read the comments. Okay, I already read. Understands she will be implementing changes as stated in the recommendations of the audit. Citizens have told council that Ms. Turner has responded to phone calls in a professional manner. Ms. Turner is responsive to emails and phone calls. She updates council on bidding projects or issues. Ms. Turner has worked diligently, diligently in response to the pandemic. Ms. Turner is aware of changes needed for finances and is working with the financial director. Prioritize budget deficiencies. And that was outlined as an objective. Okay. Achievements, keeping us informed with information concerning this epidemic. Objectives, affordable housing, and bringing back employees. Under management of the organization, works hard. That's it?
Thank you, council. Any comments?
I just want to say thank you so much, council. I am so proud and so, I am so happy that it is one of Hispanic, Hispanic month, that we have 100% Hispanic leadership here. And the girls' team, we play hard. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I will take your comments into consideration and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, for those words. And I also want to say thank you to you and the city for working so hard. And I know that it's not going to show till next year that we're doing so great in our budget. And we've already got the city back to where it's supposed to be. And of course, that will be recognized till next year. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you. Thank you. Niobro, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All of us are working very hard and moving our city forward, charted. Ms. Valdez?
And you all make some hard decisions, Councilwoman. And the city was nice enough to be here. When the gentleman, I don't know if you all remember from the Volkswagen organization that you all approved the mitigation. So he has come in and brought us the documentation. And hopefully, we'll be getting all the paperwork together and starting to get at $720,000 in vehicles. And the Council's Quay Artist Office is calling, trying to schedule, as we have received the police cars that you all approved for. And we've been approved for, I'm excited about that too. We have been approved for the six vehicles in water and sewer. And we just ordered the other day to tag them up when they get here. Because of the pandemic, they will be 2021s because they would be manufactured after August. So they'll be 2021s. So the city of Florisville, we're receiving 2021s. And when the guy said that's the first time they've ever gotten a brand-new car in Public Works, the less known six of them all at the same time. So we're really excited and so we're hoping that the other vehicles will be 2021s. On worst case scenario, there'll be 2022s. But we will be receiving those brand-new vehicles on the Volkswagen as well. So get ready, ladies, we want to take a picture with those big old trucks. But we're going to have them all licensed, all fitted up. Because I know you've seen, I saw one today. It's all faded on the sign. So we've got some new stuff that won't fade. So we'll be having to put the new tags on the new cars. And thank you for your support. I couldn't have done it without those votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments before I adjourn the meeting? Thank you, councilmembers, for being here. I appreciate everything. There was no action on executive session. So we thank you all for being here. We remind everybody to stay safe. Again, our condolences go out to the Ortiz family. Thank you so much. This meeting is now concluded at 7:20. Thank you much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.